No.
I'll begin the order to begin with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please silence your cell phones or electronic devices. And we will begin with myself, Becky, and Sarah Smith taking the oath of office.
You guys want to please rise? Raise your right hand, repeat after me, I'll kind of take it in. No, just the new one.
Oh, it's like, it's like, it felt like I was everybody getting up.
I swear and affirm that I will support.
I swear.
I swear and affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And then I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of the School Board.
The duties of the Office of the School Board.
A member of the United, the Independent School District number one one six.
As a member of the Independent School District one one six.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Oh, really?
All right, we are going to begin this meeting with the reorganization. And the election of officers. We're going to start with Board Chair. So are there any nominations for the calendar year 2023 Board Chair?
I nominate Sarah Nagel.
I nominate Sarah Nagel.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take it now as a nomination. Okay. Um, now for Vice Chair, I would entertain motions for Vice Chair, and I would personally like to nominate Becky Bennett for Vice Chair.
Second.
Third?
Or?
Are there any? I have to say it three times anyway. Are there any nomination, any other nominations for calendar year 2023 Vice Chair? Are there any other nominations for calendar year 2023 Vice Chair? Are there any other nominations for the 2023 Vice Chair? Okay, and then I, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for the calendar year 2023 Clerk.
Who's our clerk?
I, Steve was our current clerk, so I would make a motion for Cass myself.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for the calendar year 2023 Clerk? Are there any other nominations for 2023 Clerk? Are there any other nominations for the calendar year 2023 Clerk? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, entertain a motion for the calendar year 2023 Treasurer.
I nominate Brian.
I second.
I'm not Brian.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the calendar year 2023 Treasurer? Are there any other nominations for the calendar year 2023 Treasurer? Are there any other nominations for the calendar year 2023 Treasurer? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And we have a treasurer. And now.
No.
No.
Well, you can. Sorry, all those hot, sorry. All right, committee memberships. Mike and I went over this, um, I think six versions. Something like that. This is what we have come up with. Activities would be Randy and Brian. Budgets would be Brian Chair and Becky as co-chair. Curriculum would be Becky as Chair and me as co-chair. Facilities would be Cass as Chair and Sarah Smith as co-chair. Personnel would be me as Chair and Cass as co-chair, and policy would be Sarah Smith as Chair and Randy as co-chair. And if everybody approves that, I would need a motion to accept those recommendations.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And any discussion? Questions, comments, or concerns?
Did you get all them?
No.
Can you repeat them since we did?
It was hard with like two Sarahs for me.
There's Sarah in nature, Sarah without.
Okay, activities is Randy and Brian. Budget is Brian and Becky. Curriculum is Becky and Sarah Nagel. Facilities is Cass and Sarah Smith. Personnel is Sarah Nagel and Cass. And policy is Sarah Smith and Randy. Beautiful.
And the first name is the chair.
Okay, I heard no questions, comments, or concerns. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agency representatives, Minnesota State High School League would be Randy and Brian and the, um, MSBA, that was not listed for anything, uh, who was on it last year, so I wasn't sure who that was.
It says Chair.
Is it me?
Yeah, I think it's the Chair.
I looked twice, okay.
I think it's the Chair.
Then I think I would love to. Um, Community Education Advice Report would be Randy and Brian. I can find them. Paul Bunyan Education Cooperative would be me and Becky. Which is convenient since I'm their Board Chair. For the next three years. Health and Wellness Committee, last year it was Cass, this year, um, you could choose to continue. I can continue. I nominate Cass. Okay, and District Leadership Team would be Becky and I. LEA Title One would be Josh Smith. Yes, I went through those fast. Did you? But most of them were the same.
Anyone change? Well, District Leadership Team, actually Steve did that.
Yeah, it was you and Steve. And Minnesota State High School League is always just the Activities Committee. District Leadership Team is whoever's on the Curriculum Committee. And Community Ed is always the Activities Committee. All right, I would need a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Selection or designation, uh, the school calendar, uh, School Board Calendar.
You had this in your board packet. It's basically the third, or, um, third Monday of every month except for
The holiday.
The holiday, which is Presidents' Day, so that's February. We moved that one.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the time stated six.
I'm packing this. All right. Bank Depository. I didn't say, everybody said I, right?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Bank Depository. Right now. We are using. Apparently you can't just bank bigger.
I know. I'm zoomed.
Unity Bank is our current bank, Pine River State Bank, we have a little something going on, and Bremmer, I assume they're for our investments.
So you see the three on there, so we get, um, each one of them gives me their, like, fee schedules and every and whatnot, and then that's kind of where I make my decision based off of. So Bremmer did not return any fee schedule or anything, so I just kind of kept them out because I don't have any information. So really, it's the comparison between Unity and Pine River State Bank. Um, my thought process is to continue with Unity Bank, just because we have the, I mean, the overall monthly interest is like point one percent lower, but Unity Bank has that ICS account that grants us more at higher interest rate, whereas Pine River State Bank doesn't have that. Pine River State Bank also doesn't do the remote deposits, so that would also be bringing us backwards from where we are.
Their estimated cost per basic services per month is seventy-five dollars more than the other.
Right. So my recommendation to the Board is to stay with Unity Bank for this year.
Anybody want to make a motion to that?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. In Best Funds, we need a motion to authorize Superintendent Malmberg and Business Manager Melissa Berry to invest the school funds as needed for calendar year 2023.
Oh, wait, that will shoot.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We need a motion to su- uh, authorize Superintendent Malmberg and Business Manager Melissa Berry to transfer funds electronically as needed for payroll purposes for calendar year 2023.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Designate Superintendent Malmberg as the identified official with authority for the Iowa. Wow. For public, Pillager Public Schools to authorize user access to the Minnesota Department of Education secure websites.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Well, me. Plus.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. School Board Compensation. Presently, the Board Chair receives twenty-seven hundred dollars per year, and Board, other Board members receive twenty-four hundred dollars per year. Board members also have the option of being paid fifty dollars per meeting for commuted, committee meetings and special meetings. I need a motion to continue with current pay or changes, and they did include close of compensation history and, uh, compensation for other, um, boards around our area. Which, whether we stay or don't, I, doesn't really affect me very much. I don't have any personal opinion either way, honestly, but we are lower than.
Are we the lowest?
Um, Pine River Baccus is the same, but otherwise, yes, we are the lowest of the five schools. Staples Motley is currently getting almost thirty-four hundred dollars per year for all Board members. Pine River Baccus is paying twenty-four for Board Chair and their Clerk. Twenty-one hundred for all other Board members, but they get a hundred dollars per meeting. Where we're doing fifty. Wadena is twenty-eight for Board Chair, twenty-three thirty-five for Vice Chair and Clerk Treasurer. And eleven seventy-five for all other members. Crosby is forty-five hundred per year for the Board Chair and thirty-nine hundred for all other members with a hundred dollars per day for attending conferences and meetings. So, that is. I need a motion for whatever.
I'll make the motion to keep the pay the same, but make the meetings a hundred dollars.
Good. Is there a second on that?
I was gonna, okay, well, I was gonna say you.
There's a second. It can fail, it can fail for lack of a second, then we can bring another one, or?
Wouldn't you say they pay the same and? Let's, okay.
I'll second.
Calculate how many, oh yeah, now we can do discussion.
Yep, now you can discuss. And if we can vote it down and then start over again.
Would we, like, five? Because I was just gonna say add three hundred bucks there, but then that would be a wash. I'd say leave the pay, I like that.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Sounds okay. I mean, we are lower than everybody, and I was looking at how many years. We set it at one fee for a lot of years, and this one's been three years, so it'd be a change. Just comments.
And I, and I, can I chime in on something? As you grow, you have more issues and more things to deal with, so I, that would be my two cents worth. So, to support you guys.
I'm personally fine with opening the meeting.
I'm paying for Brian's.
Um, but I consider it like next year that we change, everybody really give it a thought for the year, and because I don't think anybody actually thought about it, and it's also
Excuse me?
I'm on a lot of different, I'm on a lot of different boards, and the most awkward thing is going to be yourself agreeing.
I think it's meeting party.
Feels weird.
Well, the unfortunate is when we look at this, in my opinion, as we look at this, and this is no reflection on anything, but we only had three people that ran for three
Yep.
spaces.
It's a commitment.
Correct.
And people, if they're not gonna get compensated, a lot of times people aren't gonna, don't let their.
So at some point, I'm gonna have to seriously look at this to get more people involved that want to do it.
I do like the, uh, if, if, I do like the one, District Two Crosby that pays for trainings. If you go to a training or a conference, or, you know, and like, even if you don't, if it's there, it encourages for the future Board members to go.
Well, and in all honesty, like going to MSBA.
You have to take.
Everybody has to take time off work.
And it's hard to get people to go to that, because you have to take time away from work.
Yes.
Or at least if you take that, you do get, not that you can still do that, but it, it might be something to add at some point.
What did they do? A hundred bucks for, for conference or trainings? I'm fine with them taking tax.
See, I would include that as a meeting, so that'd be a hundred.
I would, I would, too.
Well, that, yeah, that would be probably, that would be a meeting.
Yeah, we haven't done that before, but.
I'm game for that, to add for conferences or.
Because I, I do think that there are some things that we lack in training aspect of it, like the MSBA's and stuff like that, that we would like to go to, but like, you can't because of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not like a hundred dollars is gonna make up for everybody's time off work during three days. But it's a heck of a lot better than zero. So. So we're considering that a meeting from this point on.
I think you could, if you're attending a meeting.
We could.
I think you very well could.
Yeah, I mean, I think you, technically, you probably could have in the past, but we just probably never have.
Yep.
So you could have, let's say, a hundred dollars per meeting or
Conference.
Attendance
Per day.
Per day at a conference or training.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
How do we move both?
Then, now all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Selection of the official Board Newspaper. Uh, the Brainerd Daily Dispatch, it holds no longer daily. The Brainerd Dispatch is the only local newspaper that is published daily, which is, it is not.
So long.
Twice a week. It covers the district.
It does cover our entire history.
Yes.
And they were
But it is not daily.
No.
But it's not like we have any other option of daily.
No.
No.
We gotta make, we gotta make the motion before we have the.
Oh. I would make the motion to accept the Brainerd Dispatch to be the official Board Newspaper.
Okay?
I'll second.
Okay, now continue with discussion.
And we party at it.
Yes.
Well, the only thought you would have is what other newspapers out there are.
We, we checked into Staples, and their rates were a little bit more.
But I'll be honest, they, my personal, they've given us better coverage in the past, but we've always given it to Brainerd Dispatch. But. I, they do publish twice instead of once, like Staples.
Yeah, which is, does make it a little easier when you have committee meetings. It gives us a couple times a week to get them in the paper versus Staples is once a week. So it does make it a little bit easier, which isn't a huge deal, because usually I know when we have committee meetings, I usually know them at least a week in advance, but once in a while, you do have that emergency meeting where you try to have it within three days, but not, not very often.
Well, and I, I know our goal has always been to stay on the newspaper for that. However, it would be nice, and I see the, even the homecoming court of every other school published all over the Pine River, Pequa, Crosby, that they don't touch us.
It's the Highway Three Seven One Business Quarter.
Yeah.
That advertises. It has its pop, it has its positives and its negatives.
Just pointing that out, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to use Robert's Rules of Order for conducting all School Board meetings, and we use the Bobby. It says soft here, but I was, I was, at the meeting I went to on it, they called it Bobby's Rules, so I thought that was funny.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, signature plate, whoever is selected for all the, for the positions of Chair and Clerk will need to sign a piece of paper that will be used for the checks that are written. I assume I have to re-sign because the first one had to be re-signed, or does that not? I need to, just ask what needs to be signed for new signatures. Okay? I need a motion to change the signature plate from Steve to Cassandra.
I'll accept.
Second.
Uh, any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
When do I do that?
I read after the meeting.
Yeah, you have it ready?
I should open it.
Actually, I just want to. All right, that ends the reorganizational portion of this meeting. Now on to the regular meeting. Uh, are there any additions, additions to the meeting?
Yes, under curriculum, another Steps Program presentation by Ryan, he is out built today, so we're gonna push that out to next week. So, the Steps Program is going to be deleted for today.
Next week or next?
Next month, I'm sorry.
So some Board members have places that they were trying to get to. I don't think that would be, you pride that right now.
I would accept that.
Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as adjusted?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Visitor comments? Thank you for attending.
Do you think?
Chat?
You would think with all the.
All right, consider the consent agenda. All right, consider the meetings of the December nineteen, twenty twenty-two School Board Meeting. The monthly cash flow, including investments, the monthly bills paid, the monthly bills paid in the Activities Accounts. Uh, donations, which we had one donation, it looks like, this month? I can take it on swipe, yeah. From the Pillager Area Fire Department for
Boys Pigeon.
Donation for
Pigeon Machine.
Student Activity Account. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And the Personnel Summary Sheet.
Do we have a meeting?
No. Can't get this thing to move if they want. All right, uh, can I get a motion to accept all of those things?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Special Board Report with Possible Action. We're gonna start with Curriculum. And a school present, school within a school presentation by Wade Stacy Germinson and Ryan, who is not here. So Wade and Stacy.
I'll just invoke here.
Madam Chair and members of the Board, we did, uh, present to the District Leadership Team, uh, some information of where we're at with our fifth grade and sixth grade transition with school within school. So this is going to, uh, carry in kind of the same present, presentation that we shared with the District Leadership Team, which consists of teachers, staff members, uh, and some parents, and then Sarah was there, and Steve as Board Chairs and Board Representatives. So I'll turn it over to them, and at the end, I'll have a couple questions for you guys, and then maybe some possible actions, some guidance for myself. So take it away. And by the way, we presented this at MSBA. We presented, uh, I'm sorry, take that back.
Comes out in forty-five minutes, I'll try to get down to a half hour here. So, uh, the ELT being the one thing that we kind of, that was kind of the driving force for this is in fourth grade, um, our students are getting close to seventy-five minutes of math per day, even a bit more than that in ELA. And so we were kind of looking at our MCA scores, our STAR scores. And at fourth grade, they're up here a little bit. As they transition to the fifth grade, they kind of go down. And so we've looked at some interventions in the past through our Pride Time or Win Time. Uh, we've done some things with iXL, we've done some things like, I want to say Band-Aid, but kind of patchwork, I want to call that. And so we kind of looked at our schedule a little bit to see how we could incorporate more math time with our actual math teachers for our fifth grade transition. So after we kind of discussed some things, Mr. Germinson and I sat down, we looked at it, and talked to Mr. Kromiga, it actually seemed kind of more feasible if we actually combined both fifth and sixth grade with this transition, and also looked at adding our ELA minutes along with our mathematics. So we're in our new schedule, we're able to add this twenty-five additional math and ELA minutes per day, we're gonna call it kind of skinnies, but they'll actually be taught by our actual math teachers, and our ELA teachers, not trying to have it be patchwork during a study hall time or a win time or what we call our Pride Time. Um, we're also with doing the schedule, we're able to have more teaming with our core teachers. Our fifth grade team would actually just be teaching our fifth graders, except for we have one challenge, we'll talk about that here in a little bit. Uh, by doing this, we have less transition for classroom, because you'd have your, just, you could have less transition during the day. Uh, you still have opportunities for exploratories and our specials and our electives. Um, smart things, looking at this, you know, with this school within a school, we're looking at where we'd be able to offer physical education every other day all year long, not just right now. You might have a quarter, and you might not have the rest of the year type thing. Yeah, open top our exploratory, other teachers' courses, uh, and we're able to do all this by maintaining our secondary schedule for shared staff, grade seven, seven through twelve, which is a very difficult thing to do, because we have teachers who are teaching both middle school and high school. Um, and so it, 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 yeah, so it was a difficult concept. However, having both fifth and sixth grade, adding this math and ELA time actually worked out quite well. There are gonna be a couple holes, and Mr. Malmberg will kind of talk about that at the end here as far as the challenges we have. Um, so with this, too, we did have a, a little bit of a challenge with our band and choir. Right now, fifth grade does have you can, an elective where you can be in band, and you can have a elective where you can be in choir, and just do those things, okay? That'll be very difficult to keep that with this anticipated new schedule with our additional math in ELA, because something kind of has to give a little bit. And so I did talk with Mr. Freelove and Mr. Askew before we presented the DLT, and there was some concerns, and so before DLT being, we did meet with Mr. Malmberg, Mr. Kromiga, and sat down with MTH, and we actually were able to kind of have a solution to this to where it would actually be considered intro to band and intro to choir, where all fifth graders will get it, and that'll be kind of like their your band cap, if you want to call it that. Then they would have the option in sixth grade, if they want to continue with doing it in sixth grade as an elective, just band or choir, or potentially both. So at fifth grade, everyone would have introductory band, introducing instruments, and also choir, called singing or vocal. And so we were able to kind of take care of that challenge. Staffing needs with this is, uh, by, by doing this in the middle school, let's say, for example, let's say, uh, like say Ms. Frank. Ms. Frank right now teaches four cores of fifth grade ELA, and she teaches two sixth grade. By doing this, these skinnies, where all of our fifth and sixth graders are to have an additional twenty-five minutes with their actual math and ELA teacher, Ms. Frank would now teach all fifth grade ELA, which means that she's giving up two of her sixth grade ELA classes. Those would be going to somebody else, and as we just kind of, I guess, move it all forward, we are gonna be short a couple spots where we might need some staffing needs, where we would be short a couple, maybe seventh grade math and a couple of seventh grade ELA for this to be able to happen, where we can have this transition for the extra minutes for ELA and math. And then also, one, two, we really want to try to get our fifth grade to be that specific, just fifth grade team, they only teach fifth graders, kind of like the elementary concept. But due to licensing, that's a very difficult one, because science, they're licensed, because, for example, social studies, you got a five, twelve social studies license, and you're fair game for any kind of social studies subject. Science, you have life science, physical science, is a different, specific license, which Ms. Rondo has this license, so does Ms. Katus. But at the same time, there's not enough to where we can simply say, Ms. Rondo, you're only doing fifth grade science and maybe some exploratory classes, because we would not have the personnel for this due to licensure. So, um, yeah, so like I said, it's, um, kind of, kind of exciting, actually, that we're gonna be able to have our if this were to go through, to have our fifth and sixth graders get the same amount of minutes for ELA and math as our elementary kids are. So, yeah, so like I said, it's kind of, kind of exciting, actually, that we're gonna be able to have our, if this were to go through, to have our fifth and sixth graders get the same amount of minutes for ELA and math as our elementary kids are. I think, you know, I know, obviously, good education and good teaching, you know, instructor is very, very important. However, you know, I always use sports analogies, if I, if I spent, you know, a half hour shooting every single day at the gym, as opposed to an hour shooting in the gym, you know what I mean? Practice, more practice, more time, especially not just gonna be, like I said, a Band-Aid fix for their prime time, where they're actually getting those extra minutes with their actual math teacher and ELA teacher. So we can see some of our, our score's not so, maybe drop from fourth to fifth grade. And I, and I will say this, just to make sure I'm being transparent too, like, look at our MCA scores around the state, we're right there for fifth grade as well, right there for the region, actually a little higher than some regional schools, actually. But, it's also one of those things that we don't like seeing, you know, that dip from fourth to fifth. And I think giving some more time, the fifth and sixth will help with that support background before they get to the seventh grades and, and the next school. But I'll let Mr. Germanson kind of talk about the life and the, the life of the.
So this is kind of the breakdown, right here, for a fifth grader. So, we'll just say, a little way going to fifth grade. The core classes, and we're gonna stay consistent with the, the schedule that we have, hours. So, you know, first hour, for example, let's say would be math, second, English, and then we're gonna jump to fourth, science. And then sixth is social studies, where we're also going to be embedding our SEL program twice a week into social studies in fifth grade. So those would be those, those four core classes. And then we have two elective hours, that I believe will appear skinny's. And so, if you can kind of imagine four groups. So, one group will have twenty minutes of math, twenty-five minutes, excuse me, of math, and then twenty-five minutes of ELA, and then we'll swap. Okay? And then the other group would have the exploratory elective that he was speaking about, opposite FIAED. And that would be every other day for a year, which is a huge bonus for our fifth and sixth graders in particular, to have more movement, it's a huge bonus for us. And then down here, if, I'll say, if you were in the math and ELA up here, then you're gonna be down in the exploratory and the FIAED, right? And then the math and ELA here. And then we have one more hour, which would have the, he spoke about the intro to singing and the intro to instruments with health, which is state standard, and then one other course to be determined. So, that's what fifth grade would look like for one student, just like a daily schedule.
And so, in the seventh period too, when we talked with Mr. Askew and Mr. Freelove, they both were very, they, they were concerned, they wanted to make sure it wouldn't be like going into semester, where those kids only have the band, they wanted to go all year long. And so, if we look at doing the seventh period, we would actually go with like an A, B, C, E rotation. To where, you know, they might have band, then one they have vocal, one they have health, and they have this, and they keep on going forward. And we've done, we've actually done some, our A, B, with our standalone electives this year for grades five and eight, and it worked, this worked out really, really well. So I don't see an issue with that at all, actually, that way, they're seeing those kids all year long, so that will be, that's, right now, that could be a very good fix.
Wade, can you talk a little bit about that skinny? I know Ryan and you guys, we talked a little bit about, it's just not an extra work.
No, that, see, that's, that's what, so right, right now, and once again, just be transparent, we have our fifty minutes of math in the LA, okay? And then during our prime time for grades five and six, we have a rotation where kids go to get their, hear, try their SEL lessons, work completion time, some interventions for iXL, some mentoring, depending on the grade level as well. But then they also have a math rotation in their every other day too as well. But there's, it's not, it's not a math rotation that's gonna be by their, that's with their actual teacher. It's more like intervention type math, if you want to call it, that was my iXL programming. This is gonna be an actual, it's like, it's like seventy-five minutes of instruction. And the nice thing, after talking with Mr. Smith in the elementary too, having this broken up a little bit, might be a good thing too, where it's not just seventy-five minutes of trying to, your attention span. So yeah, so it's all those things where my vision, our vision is simply like, okay, so officially is our fifth grade math teacher, she's teaching seventy-five minutes of curriculum math per day, not just a Band-Aid type fix, and try to get some more. I mean, what we're doing right now, we're offering kids more intervention for math and ELA, we are a hundred percent. I just think this, this would be a little more productive, so. And then the other thing, if you go back to that, you know, the A, B, every other day type concept, there's some flexibility here as well. And so, like, after talking to some elective teachers, but, let's say, there's a day where Mr. Freelove says, you know what, I'd really like to have two days with these kids for the band part, because we're doing something. They can organize, organize that themselves, there's some flexibility. We do that right now with our A, B rotations, where let's say if Mr. Zeizi has some kind of a box lab, where it's like, I really need two days in a row, here, just whatever. They may get to work, they talk amongst each other, and it's not an issue at all, so.
When I run into a sixth grade, acceptable? So this is very similar, the four, four hours, our first, second, third, and sixth. And then sixth grade is when they could, they have the opportunity to join band or choir, and or choir. And then if, but if they choose not to, then we have, will have some exploratory options available. And then again, they have those two hours of the skinnies, like we explained before, for the four different groups. Make sense? Any questions?
And so, when we were first kind of presented with this, we, we talked about the transition, you know, of, you know, elementary to fifth grade for a long time, we've done things to, to have that transition. I was a little concerned, like, you know, how are we gonna be able to fit this in with, you know, trying to, because, you know, we share staff, we have staff who, you know, teach high school and middle school, like our electives, and just those little things where it's like, this is gonna be, this could be really kind of complicated, it might be a lot of gaps and holes. And after doing this for fifth and sixth grade into our schedule, and I know there's a couple more things that we have to look at with the high school side of things as well. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's worked out very, very well so far. Now, there's gonna be some pickups, I'm sure we'll probably come up with some things later on, where it's like, okay, yeah, we got, maybe adjust some things here and there. But, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a very good concept, and I like the fact that we're providing those extra minutes for our math and ELAs, you know, because it's, like I said, it's tough going from seventy-five minutes to fifty minutes. And I understand that success in a school is much more than maybe an MCA score and that kind of thing. However, you know, we also want to have those of not do this, you know, do this, or do this.
I think you need to explain a little bit more about the, the transition. The one thing, as I've been on the school board, the one thing I've always gotten was from fourth to fifth grade, the, the scores drop tremendously. And that's the one thing I've always had stuck in my head since I've been on the school board. I think this will help all of, in that aspect, it's where you keep Pillager Flatline instead of having that.
Hundred percent, and that, it's like, you know, the driving force behind this, you know, was add that, those times for those, actually, the driving force was really just kind of math at first. But then we looked at, well, we can offer this for both math and ELA, with how we have this concept, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
Do any of other teachers have any other concerns with this?
No, and so, actually, the, the feedback has been very good. You know, we've, like, so we tried to have, you know, open communication, we met with, you know, first we've been with our group, but then we brought some teachers in, you know, they've met with some electives. And, yeah, like I said, there was concern regarding how the band and choir would look. And understandable too, I mean, it's one of those things where, hey, you know, you have a lot of kids in fifth grade band and choir, we don't want that just to kind of go to a general music type thing. And so, the fact that they said that we want to have, let's say, let's have all fifth graders have the intro to band and intro to singing. That was a great conversation, and so therefore, yeah, it was, in my eyes, a win-win a hundred percent, so.
I think the piece of it that I thought was good too was, we have a lot of kids that go into fifth grade band, and families make an investment into a thousand dollar instrument. And, or more, and halfway through the year, the kid quits. Because they don't really know that they didn't like it, where this might get a kid, they can try instruments for the whole year, and then maybe by sixth grade, they're more committed to it, and or they're not. So that family who makes that commitment for a thousand dollar instrument, and then the kid decides halfway through fifth grade year, because they deal with it all the time. A lot of kids come to you guys and say, I want to get out of fifth grade band, because I didn't like it. Or now they get a little bit more of a taste of trying those instruments, and really, do they like it or not? I think that was a good sell for us as well, and trying to make it more of a, a whole year. And there's a lot of schools that don't have fifth grade band, because fifth grade and sixth grade, you know, it's tough to put them together, because you have beginners and kids that aren't beginning, and it's hard as an instructor. That was an, that was another problem that we had, was you have fifth and sixth grade band together, and they're at different levels. And that's hard to do that as instructor, that's why a lot of schools have sixth grade band. So this was a way that we could make it maybe work to eliminate that problem as well. So that, in the long run, I think it was a win-win to maybe do it this way as well. So that was probably the biggest issue that we had of trying to make it work with staff.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Oh, we still gotta make a motion before we have our discussion on it.
So my, yeah, so, so my, my conversation with why it's this possible action is, what I need from the board is, my conversation to you guys is, there will be some cost to this. I don't know exactly what that is at this point, because like, like you saw there, there's going to be some added staff that will be needed. We haven't gotten yet into budgeting for next year. We saw that we're gonna need some ELA, some possible math. I don't know exactly how that will all shake out. So what I need from you guys as a board is a commitment to you guys, if this is what you want to see happen, then I will have that direction with Missy and I and the admin team, to budget that in, knowing that there could be some possible increases with staffing. But then, we also may need to look at reductions in staffing on other areas as well, to make it all work. But even in the long run, you may have a, a cost to make it work, so, not knowing that at this point.
Yeah, and right now too, you know, when we're looking at this, and we started combining the high school schedule with the middle school schedule, there's also, this also opened up a couple potential elective opportunities for other people to do too.
Right.
So, you know, so there could be, yeah, so it's, we're close, we're very close to see exactly what we'll need, but.
I would say at the most, not knowing all the other ins and outs of everything, at most, it would be like a one FTE, if you combine it, you know, it's impossible. But you don't know how it all shakes out based off of, of other math needs at the high school, of ELA needs, you know, it, it, it's hard to tell you exactly, because we haven't put it together. But by the looks of it, at most, it would probably be an FTE, a one point oh, additional costs. But then when you start looking at staffing needs at the high school, based off of needs, and based off of what sections and what kids want, there may be a reduction in other areas.
So my, my guess is that tonight there would be no action. I think as a board, we support the plan, but we don't need to make a motion for that. The motion comes when it comes to.
Well, what I need is, I can't do it without knowing that, to put it in place, I have to hire people. So it's gonna affect the budget, and I can't post it without, if you see what I'm saying is.
So you want to post it now?
Well, I need to make.
So you do want an action?
Well, what I need for the action is knowing that you guys want this to happen, because then that's moving forward to posting and planning. If this isn't what you want, then you, you need to know that there's gonna be a possible cost of this.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Yep.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept this as.
School, school within school.
School within school.
That's a motion. Moving to a school within school for fifth and sixth grade.
Where I'm uncomfortable, not knowing the cost.
Well.
That's, that's why I didn't, okay, we need, first of all, we need a second.
We need to have this discussion, that's why.
We need a second. A second, okay.
Now we can.
Now, see, my, that's why I didn't personally think we needed an action yet, because until I know the costs, and what we need, I think we support the idea.
Yeah.
Depending on cost and whether that works within everything else. So, I can support this idea, but if we have to hire five teachers and we can't afford it in our budget, that's, that is a no.
It won't be, it won't be five, the most we can do is.
I understand that, but the, the premise itself, I can't say yes or no to, because I don't know if we can afford it.
So if this starts next year, when ideally, do you want to start?
We gotta build, you gotta build this, we gotta build the schedule this month.
And that's why I say, my.
I feel like you sound like you're pretty confident that it's one FTE.
At the most.
I am, I, I, I will never, ever, ever, ever say not hire a teacher.
Yeah, great.
So I'm, I'm just all for it.
I think we need help in that part of that transition.
Yes.
There's nothing about it that I don't, I like the idea going forward, I'm glad that you're getting.
Looking at what we've done and what they've done, looking at what we need to make it happen, the most we would need is a one point oh. And that doesn't mean that I can't reduce some other areas based off when we do it. But I know we need a one point oh in that area without not knowing that I can't do other things. Now, we might be able to reduce some other areas, which would reduce that cost.
And seems to me that's just something we may need anyway, which is already in your purview of the side term.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're skipping the steps program presentation by Ryan Kromenga. You can all read his Director of Teaching and Learning report.
I passed that out and put it on your desk, unless you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions about it?
Summer schools, summer schools look the same.
Sorry, sorry.
Summer schools look the same, like.
Yes, we're gonna try to set it up exactly the same as we did last summer, with activities and stuff, three weeks long. Yep, we're starting to work on that.
And utilizing some of the ESSR dollars?
Yep.
So, are we gonna offer it as much as we did this last year?
Yep, we have enough, we planned enough to have enough ESSR dollars for two years, so.
This is year number two.
This will be year number two, and then after that, if we want to do anything, it's gonna have to come out of some budget that we do. Which will be tough, because it was, you know, off the top of your head, how much we spent on summer school last year through ESSR?
It was a lot.
Yeah.
Gee.
But it was cool, I mean, it was awesome.
Very specific, but we all got the right answers.
Yeah, it was awesome with the transportation and the activities. It was a great program.
Last year they did not.
No, it just sent the kids in.
They got screened, and if, if they didn't qualify, then people.
Kids can still do the activities in the afternoon, after school.
If they were of the proper range.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on the teacher learning, teaching and learning report?
The only, hopefully, in the next month.
Then, the next committee meeting for the curriculum needs to be the twentieth or the twenty-fourth.
So, if you guys could maybe sit with me after the meeting, and we could maybe find a date.
Okay.
That's kind of a, a, agenda that I have.
Okay.
So we could just find a date, that'd be great, since you're here.
Moving on to policy, which we are going to make a read in this night.
This is, it's good that I can't get into it. Run through this last chunk and finish, because it just sounds big. You want?
Nope, nope, nope. Help her right out, that's great.
This is a second reading of policy five thirty-four, school needs policy.
A second. Beautiful. And then, we are talking about our policy, the number five oh nine, sixth grade has reached the, its top. Open enrollment cap, so we would, they would like to close sixth grade. Can I get a motion on that?
I made a motion.
Hey, any just questions, comments, or concerns?
Just comment, I guess, that if a kid moves into the district and they're in sixth grade, they can still get it.
Yes.
Just kind of reiterating that for everybody to know.
So now, while that I had to do, I have also another question, just for my own functionality of it. So let's say, we made an action now, if they go below.
We would take that.
Would we have to re-action it back? No, because, okay.
But, but once we've closed it, and we fall below it, we're okay, but if we get back to one oh five, it's closed again.
Okay, so we're making this one action item for kids that grade.
Right.
For how long? One year?
Like, if we fall below, it comes back up, do we do another motion?
No.
Or just take it here? Now it's permanently, but, so next year, we wouldn't have to.
No.
So it shouldn't technically be closing sixth grade, it should be closing the class of twenty.
Well, because it'll change in the fall, maybe.
Yeah, we, we might have to.
No, I know, but if we never have to open it or close it again, they might not be, they wouldn't be sixth grade.
We probably would have to read, we probably would have to look at it each year in the fall.
Yeah.
We fall, if we fall below, we wouldn't do it, like, let's say, two weeks from now, we go back to one oh four, and a kid moves back in, we technically would be open, because we're under the one oh five. But, if we, if we, if we stay above the one oh five, we're closed, is why we do it. We do it more for technicalities of if we stay above the one oh five, because we want to do it.
Good. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Facility, update on the leaking roof in the.
Yeah.
We did not meet.
We did not meet, no. We need to find out who I'm meeting with. We've had Herzogs out again last week, had conversations with Norson and Herzogs again. So we are still, we do have some money that we've held back from Herzogs, because they have not finished all of their checkmarks on that roofing, so that's good.
And this is the roof that's leaking.
First grade wing. It's the new one, yeah. So that's the good news is I still have something to hold over them. So we've had problems with them getting out here to fix things, but they've been out again. But I don't know if it's going to be able to get fixed, obviously with the snow on the roof. It'll leak again in the spring, once it melts. So hopefully this, this spring, when the snow melts, we can get them back out here and get the issue resolved. But we have held some money back because their, their checklist has not been completed. They still have some work yet to be done, which is good. So we are not paying them till we get that figured out as why is that area is not working.
Update. I don't believe this, on the update.
Update on facilities.
Yeah, I met with Woold last week. So we will be scheduling a facility committee meeting to go through our new analysis and the long-term facility plan with the facility committee meeting.
Do you want me to sit in on the beginning of the facilities committee meetings? You want to put me on the email chain?
Sure. So that'll be coming up here sometime in the next few weeks, so it's never that old. But finally got that done. Had a couple, Robert's been sick a couple of times and his son was sick once, so I've had trouble getting that meeting. But it's done, he'll share that with you and what, what the big issues are in the next ten years. And kind of come through the plan for the big, the big ticket items that we need to kind of be on the lookout for.
All right, anything else from facilities?
Uh, the only other thing I have is I met with the baseball coaches and Matt. And we're still kind of, we were still kind of thinking about that press box idea. And the one idea that we had kind of fell through because the cost was way more for the press box and bleachers. So where we're at right now is to, they decided to look at expanding the dugouts. And making them, making them a little bit bigger and having a, a kind of a press box area with maybe a possible higher up, one on one end. And Robert is going to look into the cost of doing that and seeing instead, instead of putting that money in the press box, we can make them into both softball and baseball and seeing how that fits into the budget. So Robert's going to put a plan together with that to share with the, so, and that kind of came from both Matt and the baseball coaches saying is that would kind of fit two problems, making the dugouts bigger and, which is kind of a need anyway. And then doing, instead of putting money in just one, we can put that money into doing that.
Are we still, are we still on for May thirty-first for completion date?
I don't know.
Should I answer?
It's just baseball field stuff, right? Not just softball.
That would be one for softball too. One, do, do one for the dugout and have the press box for the softball dugout as well.
And this is through Woold, or are we going to do?
That's Woold, it's going to put the, they're doing a, a plan to see what that would cost to extend the dugout. So, yep.
Because that was kind of in it initially, and then I thought cut. I thought that was in there, something about redoing the dugouts or making them.
Well, redoing the whole dugouts, we cut that. This would just be extending them, making them bigger. Pouring a slab, making the dugout a little bigger, yeah. It's not redoing the whole dugout.
No, but just.
Just extending them, making them a little bit bigger and then putting the baseball.
Anything else on facilities? Uh, budget?
Who's the chair? Oh, that's right, that's me.
You.
You did not meet, thanks Becky. This whole rework thing. Oh, we do have a business manager's report.
It's hard to believe, but we are over halfway through our fiscal year already. So with that, I will be looking at, well, we've already began looking at some numbers so we can be really thoughtful about our second revision. And then as soon as we be done with the second revision, we are going to turn around and start with next year's budget.
Sweet.
That's what we are working on currently. Any questions for me?
Did we update them on where we're at budget-wise halfway through there?
I don't think we did, not, not since Christmas break.
Fifty percent or below spending?
Or we were at forty-six after, at the end of December thirty-first. So. Sitting over, hey, just need to monitor that, so.
Anybody else have questions for Missy?
I think we're looking at setting up a budget meeting.
Yeah, we want to give that to Becky and Brian. I want to meet with you guys too instead of a budget meeting.
When, are we doing a facility meeting at some point or not yet?
I'm going to, not yet, till I get these are done.
Okay. And then we have personnel as well.
Yeah, I'll have a personnel team.
Anything else from budget? All right, personnel, looks like the only, we did not meet. The only thing we need to look at is setting up.
We met before, before the last board meeting, when we did my contract and stuff.
When was that?
Way before last meeting.
When was last meeting?
That was in November.
Well, that was before the December meeting, we haven't met since then.
Yeah, we haven't, that was before the December meetings. We haven't met since the last meeting.
Yeah.
But we will be meeting in the week of February sixth to the tenth, we can set something up, that's the last thing.
I didn't know who I was going to meet, but people who wasn't going to be on the meeting.
Uh, activities also did not meet and it doesn't look like has anything coming up, but I.
No, I, no, we're good, activities good.
We, want to give an update on how winter sports are going. Beautiful.
Going on.
Going.
Yeah.
Playing.
Building up.
Awesome, okay. For other, uh, it is that time of the year again. Every four years, the sorority board of directors election is up. And there is one person on the ballot.
Twenty twenty-two, not twenty twenty-three on the top.
I would appreciate a vote.
I don't know, it came from them.
My competition is heavy. Thank you. You can also write somebody on that floor. For anybody that doesn't know, Sarah, while Bruce will might not either, I was asked eight years ago to be on the NJPA board. And I said, and nobody else wanted to do it, nobody else had time. I said yes.
You gotta do it regularly.
And I enjoy it. Sorority well, and it will hopefully be my third term. Four years, and then I told them last week that I will be done in four years. They did ask me to start running for higher office there. All right, superintendent's report.
Um, I'd like to just mention that I'd like to congratulate our staff that presented at Mass Spa last week on our mentor mentee program that included Ryan Pramenga Wade, Morrison, Stacy Gerbison, Kelly Clement and Wendy Hall. Uh, our program has grown from over just a handful of student mentors to now we have over a hundred and thirty.
But I assume none of them need help in any of their subjects and are not leaving additional help. They're all getting Cs or above before they.
That would be a Stacy Gerbison question.
I will ask.
So from a parent's standpoint, the kids do, they cannot have any missing assignments to be a mentor. So they do have to stay up on their, their work.
So just congratulate them on their presentation and the program and work that they do there. Daddy Daughter Dance is on February eleventh from six thirty-eight in CTC Center. We have Sean Johnson and the Big Band Experience coming on Thursday, February ninth, seventh, yep. Terrence Telly is presenting tomorrow here at school, to the middle school, high school, school assembly. He is a well-known speaker across this country. He'll do, do a message on positivity and empowering students to make a change in their lives. He's a phenomenal speaker, so we're excited to have him. Just a food service update, we did vote to do free breakfast for everybody. We had anticipated that that would cost us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to spend that account down. By the looks of it, it'll be about eighty thousand dollars. So what we've done is we devised a plan for the remaining fifty grand to kind of spend that down with food quality for the remaining of the year. So that means we're going to have more items on the salad bar, more condiments such as sour cream, different things like that. Uh, we're going to also do, uh, uh, different items on the menu, a husky burger and a grilled chicken sandwich. And that is actually going to be a better quality of, of sandwich. So for example, um, we have hamburgers on the menu three times a week. That patty might only cost sixty cents, forty-five cents a burger. What we're going to do is we're going to do a higher grade of hamburger, like, let's say it's a dollar forty. So it's going to be a better quality grilled chicken sandwich and then we're going to call it the husky burger. And it'll actually be a little bit better quality. And that, that cost will be transferred onto this spend down account. And then we'll market that to our students and we're going to have some kids in to kind of promote that, that husky burger and that chicken sandwich is, is a little bit better quality. So the kids know it a little bit.
Are the rules different now with having sour cream and all the condiments and stuff?
Some of it, some of it is and some of it isn't, depending on the item and depending on what, it all fits in the week. So, well, yeah, it's based off of sodium and content and all that, so, yeah. You can't have, it's, it's, it'll go to their nutrients or whatever, but, yeah. It's based off of the menu. So we'll market that, so we'll try to, you know, try to spend that money down a little bit. But I want to try to do something to, to do, you know, promote that, to promote that a little better. So kids know that that husky burger is a little bit better than the regular cheeseburger maybe, more kids will eat that possibly. So that's kind of a plan that we have with Avians right now, to try to, to use that fifty grand a little bit. And then we'll see how that goes. And then maybe when we get our new sheets for next year and if we have some more to spend down, again, maybe we can make that plan as a continuing thing for next year is maybe that husky burger stays on the menu every year.
Will the husky burger cost more?
Not for kids, we spend it down and it'll cost us more.
Is, has breakfast done well?
Well, it has, but, you know, not as many kids have taken it as we had hoped.
They have time.
Yeah, we, you know, it just, they just don't, yeah. Just hasn't, for some reason, we don't take it to the classroom like we did during COVID, that may be part of it. But we even have the.
In the elementary, they were for a while.
We were and it just got to be too much waste and it was the teachers, it was too much work for the teachers to keep track. So now we have them all come down to the cafeteria, which there's pros and cons to that because now they can do more hot things like, you know, breakfast pizza, which they couldn't do in the rooms. So there's a give and take with, you know, there's more items that they can do now. But then some kids don't come down because it's too hard to come down or, you know, it is what it is. Yeah, so, but, so that's where we're at with the breakfast, I just want to give you an idea. We'll see how those two things go and, and some of that, so hopefully we can promote that a little better. Snow days, week January thirty, February fourth, that's coming up. I'm going to try to schedule, we have to take a new school board photo. So I'm going to try for February, I don't know, is everybody kind of planning on being, you're not here February?
I'm going to be gone from February sixteen through February thirty-four.
So, and I don't know if Ryan or Randy's going to be here either, so maybe we'll shoot for March.
I'm going anywhere. What's the date of the meeting in March?
Meeting in February?
Yes.
Oh, I will be here, I'll be back in March.
So if anybody else is going to be gone in February, we probably need to know that because I don't know about Randy, if he's back yet. So if Cass is gone.
You mean the meeting day?
Yeah. So, because we need four for a quorum.
If it's the twenty-seventh, I'll be.
Yes, when it's here. So you're here. So if Randy's back, we could do our group photo in February, so I'll just wait to hear from Randy, so. Yeah, so if that's the case, I'll send you guys out a notice, so we'll probably try to do a little early. Like, we, we shot that photo like at five forty-five, we did our group photo and all of that. And then Sarah would have to get her new individual photo and all that stuff. So I'll let you know on that, okay? A couple of things. This is Elle's last meeting, Elle's resigned and she's, her last day is February eighth. Her and her family are moving to St. Paul area. So I'd like to thank her for her last seventeen months and I wish her all the best. And appreciate everything she's done for us in the board, uh, so appreciate that. And then the last thing is, it's paraprofessional thank, or paraprofessional week, January twenty-ninth through this week. So I thank them for all that they do for us and they're a big part of teaching and all the learning that goes on for our professional week as well. So that is all I have.
All right. I would enter the motion to adjourn. So. Any questions, comments or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.